All right, it is May 13th, Planning Commission Public Hearing, and we'll call the meeting to order. It is 4:30 PM. My name is Sam Rockwell. I'm president of the Commission. I'm joined by Commissioners Ellison, Brown, Coleman, Sweetsie, Luppi-Peer, Schrader, and Olson. First thing we should do is take a motion to approve minutes from the last meeting. Here, a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we'll take a report from the Committee of the Whole Consent Agenda, and I'll give that over to Commissioner Luppi-Peer.
Thank you, President Rockwell. We approved a landfill of 4143 Penn Avenue North as well as a housing replacement District 4 Tiff Plan, and found them both to be consistent with the Minneapolis Comprehensive Plan for Sustainable Growth.
Very good. I will open the public hearing on the Committee of the Whole Consent Agenda. Is there anybody here to speak on that? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and take a motion to approve that consent Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Our next task is to organize our agenda for today. I'm going to walk through the agenda item by item. If there is something you're here to testify on, please raise your hand and let us know. Otherwise, we will put it through on the consent agenda if we put that through. So, our first item is number one, Malcolm Yards, Phase 1, 45 Malcolm Avenue Southeast, and that will be continued to the June 3 public hearing. Item number two is 1717 Second Street Northeast in Ward 3. Is anyone here to testify on that?
Yes.
All right, we've got one person here. Thank you. We'll just discuss item number two. Item number three, Ramsey Street Northeast Vacation, Ward 3. We'll be continuing that motion, that item indefinitely. Item number four, Lagoon Apartments, 1721 Lagoon Avenue in Ward 7. Is anyone here wishing to testify on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on consent. Item number five, which is 3017 and 3021, 3025 East Calhoun Parkway in Ward 10. We'll discuss item number five. Item number six, 310 Second Street North in Ward 3. Is anyone wishing to testify on that item? Item number six, we will put that on consent. Item number seven, 2015, 2019, 2113 Cedar Avenue South and 1820 and 1834 East 22nd Street in Ward 6. Is anyone wishing to testify on this item? Seeing no one, we'll put item number six, sorry, seven, on consent. Item number eight, Midtown Corner, 2913 and 2941, 26th Avenue South, 2912, 28th Avenue South in Ward 2. Several applications there. Anybody wishing to testify on item number eight? Seeing none, we will put that on consent. Item number nine, 3443 Lindell Avenue South in Ward 8. We will continue this item to the June 3 public hearing. So, anyone who's here for that, we'll continue that to the June 3 public hearing. Item number 10, Fourth Street Apartments, 1121 Fourth Street Southeast in Ward 3. Is anyone wishing to testify about this item? Several applications there. Seeing none, we'll put that on consent. Item number 11, 2406 McNair Avenue North in Ward 5, Final Platt. Anybody wishing to testify on this item? We'll put that item on consent. And item number 12, I said item number five, and that was item number 11. Item number 12, 3402 and 3410 Wiltshire Place in Ward 1. This item has been withdrawn. Okay, so, our agenda as amended is as follows. We will discuss items 2 and 5. Items number 4, 6, 7, 8, 10, and 11 will be on consent. We'll continue items 1 and 9 to the June 3 meeting. Item number 3 will be continued indefinitely, and item number 12 is withdrawn. Commissioners, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Selective.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Could I get a motion on the withdrawal of item number 12?
Selective.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Could I get a motion to continue items number 1 and 9 to June 3, and item number 3 indefinitely?
Selective. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. I will now open our public hearing on the consent agenda. Items number 4, 6, 7, 8, 10, and 11. If anybody wishes to state anything on those agenda items, yes, sir.
I have a question about those specific items, but I do have a question about the continuation for number 9.
Number 9, I can let Mr. Crandall speak to the continuation of number 9, if you will.
So, Peter Crandall, Senior City Planner with SEEPAD Land Use. It was brought to the planning staff's attention that there may have been some irregularities with the noticing for that project, and that some notices to adjacent property owners were not received within proper time for tonight's public hearing. And as a result, staff has recommended that the item be continued to June 3. It will be re-noticed to all adjacent property owners, and we'll consider the applications at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Crandall. So, we apologize for inconvenience for those who came out. We realized that we had not gotten notice out as required, and want to make sure that we are in fact allowing everybody to speak on these items.
I have a question regarding notice.
You know what? We're going to table this until...
The property owner will take their property notice.
Okay. We will address all the notice issues. If you could speak to Mr. Crandall.
Yeah, if people have specific questions, they're welcome to contact me. My contact information is on the City Planning Commission or the City Planning Department's website, and several people from the neighborhood organization have been in touch with me. So, you can reach out to them as well for contact info.
Thank you, Peter. All right. Anybody else speaking on consent agenda? Seeing none, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Selective. Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Chair, I'll just note that I'm recusing myself from item 7, as my spouse's employer was involved in that project.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. With that recusal, I will take the motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. We will move on to our public hearing, and item number 2 is our first public hearing item, and mailings sent.
Hi.
Your staff, welcome.
Good evening, President Rockwell and Commissioners. The project before you is just a rezoning from the existing zoning district of R2B. They're requesting to put an art studio and gallery in this property, and they are requesting the C1 zoning district, which is the first district that allows that type of use. It's most recently been used as offices for Eastside Neighborhood Services. This property was also constructed in 1933 as a commercial space, and based on the required findings, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. One of the factors is that also it is located on a community corridor, Second Street Northeast, and staff finds that the request would be appropriate. I'm here to help answer any questions and address the concerns of the public, the member of the public.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? All right, then we will open the public hearing. Thank you, Maureen. And I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first if they would like to address the commission. Fill in any details.
Hi, I'm Grace Solworth, owner of the art studio that's coming in. And Dwayne Arons is the owner of the building, and I don't see him here, so...
Very good. Do you wish to add anything to mailings? Perfect. Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the applicant from Commissioners? All right, we'll open the public hearing to the public. Does anybody wish to testify? Please come to the stand, state your name and address for the record.
I'm not sure how this works, but the property that they're talking about is adjacent to my backyard, and I'm sure you're all familiar with how busy it gets, because that little neighborhood is turning into a mini uptown. Every weekend during the summer, there's a festival going on, lots and lots of traffic and foot traffic and activities. Behind the building that they're taking over for their classes is a big vacant lot, you know, grassy, and then to the side, there's a parking lot. And it is my experience that they are going to fill that with, you know, their wares to sell or offer it to other people. I have a dog. I have grandchildren that are very shy. I feel that when they fill that, it's going to really interrupt my activities in my yard. There's no way to avoid it. I don't know how else to explain it, but, you know, last night, I was in my yard, and there were a few people in there already putting plants in, and I walked over, and, you know, she seemed to want to brush me off, but said, "Oh, no, we won't be doing that." And my daughter said, "Well, maybe next year." And she goes, "Oh, yeah, maybe next year." So, they have full intentions of filling that space with lots of people every weekend during the summer. And that's, I just wanted to point that out. I don't think it's fair to me, and I don't know what I can do about it. That's it.
Thank you very much. Yes? Yep?
Excuse me, ma'am. I have a question for you. Sorry. So, just to clarify, are you saying that there's the empty lot on Third Street is the one you're concerned about?
No. I live at 1720 Third Street, and right behind me is their building where it used to be the daycare for elders. And so, there's a little deck, and then there's a little, like a little garden area close to the deck, and then there's a big, I would say 50 by 100-foot grassy area that notoriously was just filled with weeds, which I dealt with. And then right next to that is a huge parking lot. That all belongs to that property.
Okay, so, your concerns are that on their property, they'll be doing this, not on that adjacent parcel that's taken?
No, right behind them.
So, wait, so is the parcel behind them or on their property still?
Well, it's on the backside of their...
So, it's behind their building?
So, it's behind Second Street.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, before you leave stand, could you just provide a name and address for the record?
Me?
Yes.
Angela McGovern, and I live at 1720 Third Street.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to testify? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Michelle Tabor, 1005 Polk Street Northeast. But the thing she neglected to say, she talked to them, and they said that they were going to be building a privacy fence, and she wants to know what she can do to make sure, ensure that that is something that's going to happen to keep her property, pleasurable property for what she pays, especially with the taxes going up. So, that's what she's wondering about, how to find out about that and to enforce it. So...
Very good. Thank you. All right, is there anybody else wishing to testify? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there, is there any discussion or a motion to start us off? Commissioner Brown?
I'll move to approve the rezoning.
Selective.
A motion and a second to approve the rezoning. Is there any discussion?
I'll just add, I think in this case, since it is a property that's located along a community corridor, we can certainly make the case that the commercial zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I also think, given that there is an existing commercial building on the property, it's, there aren't a lot of reasonable uses under the R2B zoning for that use. Just to address the testifier's concerns, you know, in this case, we are simply asked to consider the rezoning. There is no site plan that's part of this application, so we can't really attach conditions to that. I guess I would just encourage her to maybe connect with that property owner and better understand what they're looking at in terms of screening. I also believe that zoning code addresses in some way outdoor utilization of commercial property and screening, so there may be some opportunity there as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to item number 5.
Good evening, Commissioners. This project is located on three parcels that front along East Lake Calhoun Parkway, 3017, 3021, and 3025. The project is current, or the sites are currently occupied by two single-family homes and one triplex. The property owner is proposing to demolish the existing structures on the site in order to construct a new three-story residential building with 17 dwelling units. In order to accomplish that, they will be rezoning the southernmost parcel at 3025 East Lake Calhoun Parkway. They are proposing to rezone that to the R3 Residence District. They'll also need a conditional use permit to exceed the maximum height in the Shoreland Overlay, which is 2.5 stories, 35 feet, to a proposed height of three stories, 48 feet. The project will also require a variance to increase the maximum floor area ratio, as well as variances to the lot coverage and impervious surface, and then also a variance to the minimum lot area per dwelling unit. So, members of the Commission who have been around for a minute may remember that we've seen several proposals for this site in the past, including a four-story condominium building, a four-story assisted living facility, and most recently, a four-story version of this proposal as a residential structure. The applicant has been working closely with city staff, with the neighborhood organization, and with adjacent property owners to come up with revisions to the proposal that meet the concerns of neighbors, as well as concerns of staff that the project comply with comprehensive plan guidance for the site. This is aerial showing you the site in relationship to the context. As you can see, it's on the east shore of Lake Calhoun. There's some photos of the alley, and then photos of the property from the parkway. As I stated previously, the current proposal is a three-story, 48-foot residential proposal. The functional height of the building to the roof deck is actually 38 feet, but the proposal includes several stair enclosures that access rooftop patios, and that the height of those is included in the overall height of the project. The applicant is proposing parking on the site. There will be 18 enclosed vehicle parking stalls below grade, accessed via the shared alley at the rear of the site, as well as 18 bicycle parking stalls. The site plan includes a significant amount of landscaping on the front of the site, including several imperviously serviced patios, for which the applicant is seeking a variance to increase the maximum size of a patio and a required front yard. Additionally, the applicant will be attempting to retain three existing mature oak trees on the site to comply with guidance in the Shoreland Overlay District that as much vegetation as possible be maintained to screen the property from the public right-of-way in the shoreland. And then you can see on the roof deck there, those are the rooftop patios, and then the stair enclosure that reaches those three. So, the project is primarily clad in brick masonry with some metal panel accents at the window frame. And then these are showing sightlines from the public right-of-way towards the project. Staff is recommending approval of all the applications with some minor conditions of approval, including that the applicant retain those existing trees on site. I will conclude my comments there, and I can take any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Peter. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Crandall. Peter, do one quick question. We have a letter in our packets from the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board stating that the applicant is encroaching on Park Board property. Is that in fact true?
They are proposing the replacement of some of the public right-of-way in front of the building. I just received that letter today from the Strategic Planning Director at the Park Board, and we do have Park Board staff on our preliminary development review process that looks at all proposals prior to land use submission. So, the Park Board has seen this project. They will have to coordinate with Park Board officials in obtaining whatever required permissions or permits they need in order to do work in the public right-of-way along that street.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Peter. With that, we will open the public hearing, and I'll ask the applicant to speak first. Please come to the stand, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Bossir Turin. My address is 2701 Lake of the Isles Parkway East. So, I'm the landowner of the three properties, and so my family and I actually initially lived in the middle unit, 3021. So, we lived there for approximately six years, and over the years, sort of ended up, for various reasons, you know, buying the properties on either side. And when we moved, had long thought it would be a wonderful spot to have a development. You know, obviously, it's a very busy area. It's across from the sailing school and the former Tin Fish Restaurant. And so, for about the past two-plus years, we've been working to try to find a suitable project that would really enhance the neighborhood. And we initially started with a five-story condo project, and after several neighborhood meetings, you know, we realized that this was really not acceptable or not really appropriate to the scale of the neighborhood. And so, we backed that down and went back to the drawing board and then put together a four-story project, which initially, we decided to attempt a senior living facility, but this required some zoning up to R4, and that was an issue. So, we then sort of backed to the drawing board and found a sort of a hybrid of condo and apartment rental units, a four-story version, and again, worked quite a bit with the neighborhood and, you know, heard their concerns about, you know, respecting the Shoreland Overlay. So, we went back to the drawing board, and this most recent version, I think, is one we're pretty excited about, because I think for the first time in two years, we've really had, you know, good collaboration with city staff, with the neighborhood, with the neighbors. And we actually took a little different approach. We actually, the ECHO group had a subcommittee designated for the project, and it was actually very useful for us. We actually had them come sit in on our development meetings, and several really good ideas came out of that, including how we actually have the parking layout, sort of some of the nuances of the building. So, what you have before you now has sort of come out of all of that collaboration, and it's a three-story building, as Peter mentioned, but the top floor will be condos for sale, and there'll be three of those, and then apartment buildings, apartment units for the other 14 units. And then I do have Scott from DJR Architecture, Nick Walton, and Carol Anning, if there's any sort of technical questions about the project that you would have.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? All right, with that, anybody who wished to testify? Yes. Sorry. There is a question. Could you just quickly review the stormwater management proposed?
Good evening. Scott England with DJR Architecture, 333 Washington Avenue North. The stormwater is, if you see on the site plan, in the upper right corner, northwest corner, and the southeast or southwest corner, there are two rain gardens that will be in those locations predominantly. The rain is coming around the two sides of the building and kind of focusing in those two areas. I'm not a civil engineer, so I can't speak to all the specifics on that, but that is my understanding of the way they are addressing it.
I thought I saw in the plans there's an underground system as well.
Oh, yeah, there's a tank that's underneath the approach to the garage. I'm sorry. Yes, great.
Anyone else? Is that a raised? Yes. Commissioner Coleman?
Just wondering if you have any insight as to the Park Board's objections?
I think that their concerns are that we would be doing work in the parkway, because we need to gain access to the sanitary and the water main, sanitaries who are in the water mains, you know? So, we're really limiting to that component of it only.
My assumption is that you would restore it or build it to Park Board specs?
Absolutely, we would. Absolutely, yes. As well as, you know, building the sidewalk in front of our building, we're going to put that back to the city standards also.
Any other questions from Commissioners? All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify, please come to the stand, state your name and address and testify.
My name's Lee Todd. I live at 3139 Irving Avenue South. I'm the chair of the ECHO Livability Committee and subcommittee that worked with Basir and his team. And you have a letter from the ECHO Board that's been approved in your packets. I wanted to speak to two things that are a bit unique about this project. One is this is the most equitable, fair, cooperative situation we've run into, thanks in no small part to Basir Turin and DJR. They've done a really good job at working with the neighborhood, asking us questions, giving us a chance to let them know the areas that of greatest concern to us, not just the height issues, but issues relating to how, we have children in that alley, those alleys are really important, and we're trying to make sure that the access was proper, and it has been quite satisfactory. And it has been quite satisfactory. And so I just wanted to say a thank you. The second part is that the one concern we have, and you probably saw it in the packet write-up, is the fact that the building is requesting a 48-foot variance in the CUP floor height. And our concern of that is, the actual building itself is 38 feet, 39 feet, and then there's these little patios that they've got that are set back. They're not visible and we're fine with this building the way it is. Our concern relates to the larger issue of, call it comparative precedent. We've worked with a lot of developers. Every developer that comes in says, "Well, I'm building just a block from that building and that building is 50 feet, therefore I should be able to start at 50 feet and go up." And our concern is that we don't like that. We don't like starting, rather than negotiating from 35 feet, which is a Shoreland ordinance, we're suddenly positioned to be negotiating from 50 feet. And we had some discussions with Basir and his team and I think they're going to, I think that, well, they can change their minds, but I think they agree with us that it would be nice if in your ruling on this, if you could put some kind of codicil in that would recognize the difference between a fourth story of 10 feet and rooftop patios. I don't know if in your zoning laws, you've got a specific set of things about rooftop patios, but if you don't, it would be a good idea for the planning commission perhaps to have a policy on these because they do tend to raise the perceived height of the building from the standpoint of the law, but not necessarily in terms of utilization. It's not a fourth story. And so what we would like you to do is consider either writing something in or so we don't end up, and we have other buildings already going in the neighborhood that are not far from this one, and there's a building just north of it, so that we're really starting at 35 feet and not at some other place like 50 feet, which is with the height about where we would be starting. So that's a request. Either write something in this one so it can be specific to this one, but in a more general guideline, you're going to have rooftop patios all over the city and they're popping up. And if you don't have a policy about them with regard to height and the effect on the height ordinances they have, it would be useful if you wrote one up. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else wishing to testify? Please come to the stands, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jenny Walter and I live at 3020 Knox Avenue South. My home is directly east of this proposed development site. I'm also a member of the Echo Board. My husband and I purchased our home in 2015 and started a family and now have two young boys, age three and one. We've been closely involved with this development since its infancy, when Basir Turin and Ruder Walton Development Team submitted their initial proposal for an outrageous five-story 57-foot building back in 2016. I have worked tirelessly along with other community members, Lee Todd, Dane Stewart, David Tompkins, Suzie Goldstein, Arlene Freed, and among countless of others, to encourage the developers to build a development that adheres to the Uptown Small Area Plan, that respects the guidelines outlined in the Shoreland Overlay District Ordinance, one which fits with the character of the neighboring surroundings, and one that addresses the parking and alley safety issues. Over the past year, we've worked closely with Basir Turin and the development team, and I would like to thank them for taking the time to listen to our concerns and for collaborating with the neighborhood, specifically with those who are directly impacted by this development. I am pleased with many aspects of this current proposal. We are happy that the underground parking entrance exit is located at the northern end of the alley. There are young children that live on Knox Avenue South and our residential alley is our main entrance and exit to our home. It is essential that our alley remain a residential pedestrian-friendly alleyway and one which neighboring homes can continue to use safely by foot, bicycle, or while pushing a stroller down to 31st Street, the lake, or to Knox Avenue South. We're also happy that this will be a mixed rental and condo development that allows for larger floor plans, so hopefully more families can move into the area. The height of the building, which currently stands at 49 feet, remains of concern. I am fearful that this development will set a dangerous precedent for all other developments along a parkway and allow developers to plow through the Shoreland Overlay District Guidelines and Uptown Small Area Plan to build extreme heights around our neighborhood and sacred lakes. I realize that it has taken a lot of work and negotiations on the part of the neighborhood and the development team to get to this point, but as a mother, I want my children to grow up and know a Minneapolis where they have access to our beautiful lakes, parks, and wildlife, unobstructed by high rises. In order for this to happen, we must uphold the Shoreland Overlay District Ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to testify? Yes, please come to the stand, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Arlene Freed and I live at 1109 Zerxes Avenue South, and I've lived there since 1985. It's Bryn Mawr, so I'm not in the Calhoun area, but my interest was the overall interest of the parks and the lakes. And I'm addressing this to planning commissioners. As a member of ELEC, Emergency Lakes Environmental Coalition Task Force, the organization that was responsible for the passing of Minneapolis's Shoreline Height Ordinance in 1987, I want to share my thoughts about this East Calhoun Parkway project. ELEC lobbied for the Shoreline Height Ordinance, which was passed in 1987 to protect Minneapolis's lakes and parkways from becoming cluttered with urban structures that would interfere with the natural environment. The maximum height of structures in both the R3 and the Shoreline Overlay District is 2.5 stories or 35 feet. This proposed structure is three stories, 38 feet to the top of the roof deck and 48 feet to the top of the rooftop stair enclosures. The applicant is seeking a conditional use permit to increase the maximum building height, which does concern me. My concern with this project is that by exceeding the guidelines in the Shoreline Height Ordinance, a precedent can be established and the next developer will use this project as a wedge to build even higher. I think that's all of our concerns. I'm not opposing the project, but this one piece is concerning. Please make your decision in keeping with the true intent of the ordinance, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to share my thoughts.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. Carolyn Vanis. I am the neighbor to the south of this proposal. I live at 3033 East Calhoun Parkway. I'm an owner in the condo on the first floor unit. So I'm also here to express concern about breaking the Shoreland Overlay, but from a different aspect than what you might have heard before. So I'm an avid sailor. I grew up sailing on Lake Calhoun at the now Minneapolis Sailing Center. And it's, the community that that building fosters is absolutely incredible. We, or they, I'm no longer working there, but they teach students, teenagers, mother-daughter classes, father-son classes, adult classes. It's really incredible the amount of people who come to participate and learn how to sail in addition to the sailing community in Calhoun. One thing that you might not be aware of is that within sailing, there's something called wind shadows. And wind shadows are where the wind is blocked between seven and 10 times the height of a structure. So something to consider with the Shoreland Overlay that might not have been taken into account before is that if we break that, you're starting to create wind shadows across the entire lake if the precedent is set by this building that others can then replicate and build off of. So that would be disruptive to the sailing community. It would harm the culture and the ability of the sailing school to serve the community in the way that it does. It's quite difficult, as you can imagine, to be sailing and then not have any wind. So I want you to please consider that as you decide how the precedent is set by this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to testify? Yes, please come to the stand, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Denise Seleski.
I'm Jeff Toire.
We reside at 3015 East Calhoun Parkway. We are the building just north of this property. One of our largest concerns is parking. We currently reside in a six-dwelling unit where we have 20 residents. We only have five spots behind our building, so that leaves us to find public parking on the streets. Knox is permit parking only. And East Calhoun Parkway between Lake and 31st recently became, last July, no overnight parking between the months of April and October. So that leads us to find parking blocks away. And it is now uncommon that in the summer, I am left parking four blocks away. And it's a huge safety concern for all females in my building. Now, what concerns me is with this proposed unit, there are 17 dwellings inside with only 18 spots. And I know they're saying that they're going to be using the transit. Well, as a millennial, I can assure you, we have 20 cars for our building. We may be taking the bikes and scooters in the summer, but everyone has a car. So it concerns me that in an upscale condo and apartments, that there's going to be more cars, or at least one car per resident. And I think it's safe to say there's going to be more than 18 cars. So that puts parking up for another debate and to add to the congestion of the already existing area. And I'm not quite sure what another option could be, but it's extremely concerning for my safety, thinking that I'm either going to have to move out of the area. I've lived there for three years, he's lived there for five, and we love the area. We have been recently going to Echo meetings because of the parking, because it's a huge safety concern for me. And I don't want to have to be on the phone with someone every single night walking home because I can get parking out front or behind my building or at least on 31st between Knox and East Calhoun. So if the parking can be addressed and the safety of the residents and the added congestion to that already ridiculously congested neighborhood of parking, that'd be greatly appreciated.
We'd ask you to consider to minimize construction in the summer months due to the area being way more populated in the summer, you know, whether the project can...
Be delayed till parking's open again on the parkway.
Further, you know, in the fall, as the summer is very congested and parking's in the summer is just impossible.
And we understand we can't delay the project forever. It's going to happen eventually, but if we're just trying to like make it safe for everyone in our building, and our building knows we are here speaking for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Jenny Alaphant. I live at 3415 Lyndale Avenue South. I wanted to echo the concerns I heard about the wind for the Sailing School and ensure you that you consider these kinds of environmental impacts that aren't just about the number of people that don't drive cars that ride in buses and things like this, but are actually our environmental concerns that affect our entire communities. If these buildings are built on Calhoun, they'll be built around other areas as well as we know these areas are sometimes zoned in the same similar way. I'd also like to ask from the staff report, what are the dwelling units per acre for this particular property proposal?
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to testify? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we are looking at a number of applications. Any discussion or motions to start us off? Commissioner Ellison.
I have a question here.
Mike.
I have a question for Peter about the condition to preserve the oak trees. How far in the future do we sort of check back in to see how they're doing?
We have a process for zoning inspections that generally happens about two years after the approval, the land use approvals, because that's how good, that's how long the approvals are good for, and the applicant is expected to have made significant progress on the construction by that point in time. So that's probably the earliest that we would be made aware of any inconsistencies with that condition. I did include in the condition that if the trees are damaged in any way, that the applicant will have to propose some kind of mitigation plan.
Okay, thank you.
Peter, while we've got you up here, could you state for us what the parking minimum requirement is here?
So the project qualifies for the transit reduction incentive, which would bring the parking requirement to zero for a project of this size. Were that not the case, then the regular minimum would be one-to-one, in terms of one parking unit per dwelling unit. And the applicant's proposing 18 parking spaces for 17 dwelling units.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other discussion? Commissioner Coleman.
I will move to approve the rezoning as recommended by staff under item A.
We have a motion to approve item A.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Commissioner Coleman.
I will move to not approve the conditional use permit to increase the height of the building in the Shoreland Overlay District, and I would be happy to explain why if there is a second.
Do we have a second? Motion and a second.
So I am happy to hear from the Echo and the residents around there, and I have concerns that I've expressed in the past about deviating from the Shoreland height requirement. And to me, the particular failure of this one is views from the water. While the staff analysis of the conditional use permit talks about views, it doesn't talk about views from the water, and the Shoreland Ordinance also includes consideration for views from the water. I will say that I'm also not, I don't feel, there's no compelling reason to have those bump-ups. They look a little odd to me. And it is just, we have units that front and can see Lake Calhoun, and then we also have these bump-ups. So there's no detriment to the unit itself to me from removing those, since they already have wonderful views to Lake Calhoun. So I am not in support and I, that's why.
Commissioner Lu, keep here.
Yeah, I have a question for staff. Peter, can you tell us what the height of the building is without the stair overruns for roof access?
The height of the building to the roof deck is, I believe, 38 feet. So the building itself exceeds the maximum height in the Shoreland without the roof deck.
By three feet?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, and I don't support the motion. I think the findings outlined in the staff report for the conditional use permit for height are very well thought out. I think in this particular location, because of its proximity to the commercial corridor and the language in the small area plan for this area with respect to transition, this site falls within that transition area. I think when we look at one of the findings we have to make relates to scale and character of surrounding uses. I think a building of this height is generally in keeping with the other structures we see in the immediate area. I also want to point out, you know, we heard from some of the testifiers, concern about precedent or, you know, if we approve this conditional use permit, does that somehow open up the floodgates for other projects elsewhere? I do think it's important to note that we really evaluate every proposal on its own merits. I think just because a conditional use permit for a 48-foot building is appropriate at this location, it doesn't mean that that's the case everywhere around the lake or elsewhere in the neighborhood.
Any other discussion? All right, I think we can do a roll call on this. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
No.
Coleman?
Yes.
Ellison?
No.
No.
Lubke here?
No.
Olson?
No.
Schrader?
No.
Sveezy?
No.
So that's one yes and seven no's.
All right, so the motion fails. Commissioners, do we have a different motion? That'll be... Commissioner Brown.
I'll move approval of item B, the conditional use permit for height.
A motion to approve conditional use permit for height, item B. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. And Commissioner Lubke here.
Yes, I'll be supporting this motion. I concur with Commissioner Brown. I don't think it sets a precedent, because we do look at everything independently, and I think that the thoughtful request for us to add notations about the fact that most of the overrun, with the exception of three feet, is due to these rooftop access things that you can't really see from the ground. As much as we'd like to do that, we just simply can't make modifications to the zoning code just on these instances. That's, we've discussed it numerous times, I've been on this commission over a decade, about whether we include that in the height or not. We include it to err on the side of, you know, knowing what the maximum really is. If we left it off, we'd be seeing all sorts of weird chimney stack things popping up on buildings. So I do think it's something we need to consider, though, as green roofs are becoming more the norm, especially given the sustainability and recreational uses that people like to have now, and retaining stormwater on rooftops and whatnot, so, and just having green roofs in general. So I think it's a conversation we should revisit as a commission to somehow address, but I think for tonight, I would say your concerns are well-heard, and I actually am voting for this without any concerns that your concerns are being ignored. I think that we're being very thoughtful with it, and you won't see this, setting a new precedent as the new minimum of height that the next building's going to try and leapfrog over, so rest easy.
Other comments? I'd also add that by coming to this hearing and testifying, you're on the public record. So this is the public record, and I think you've got something you can point to. Anybody who comes and testifies before the Planning Commission is putting those views on the public record, so, something to consider. All right, with that, we have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit, item B. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
All right, we have, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, sorry, seven in favor, one opposed. Motion carries. All right, do we have a motion on item C? Commissioner Brown?
Yes, and I'll take a few of these. I'll move approval of variances C, D, E, F, and G.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to move approval of items C, D, E, F, and G. Commissioner Brown, does that include the one stated condition on item G?
Yes, that's correct. Item G has the one condition related to the patios and the front yards.
Very good. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item H. Commissioner Brown?
And I will move approval of item H, the site plan review with the eight stated conditions.
Second.
A motion and a second on item H with the eight stated conditions. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. With that, we conclude our public hearing. Meeting adjourned.
I had one minor communication.